All right, welcome. It is five o'clock on August 19th, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape Girardeau. Welcome to you all here. We will begin tonight with the invocation by Reverend Linda Gastrok of Gastrok. I'm so sorry. I was trying to go by my whatever. From Grace United Methodist Church here in Cape Girardeau. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Let us pray. Holy One, as we gather here tonight, we are especially mindful of the young people among us who are starting another academic year. We ask your blessing on them, the staff, the teachers, their parents, their families, as they go into this year. And most of all, God, we simply ask that you keep them safe and let them grow in the days ahead. You place a call on all of those who lead, and so may each person gathered here this evening be mindful of that call and the responsibility that comes with it. May those who have assembled approach the work that is before our community with a spirit of generosity. Let it be drawn from a desire to be of service to the people of Cape Girardeau and the land on which we live. May all of our minds be open and guided by you so that our words will be spoken with honor. May our hearts be open so that we can voice our truth with integrity and have our ears tuned to listen carefully to one another. May the decisions be made here tonight come from a desire to discern your will and to bring unity even where there are differences. Tonight, we ask for your wisdom and your grace so that all our talents will be put to work for the betterment of those we serve. And with gratitude, we offer this prayer in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. We do not have any items for the study session or presentations tonight. Counsel, any communications and reports you'd like to share?
I'd just like to say.
Oh, and make sure it's.
Yeah. I'd just like to say, I attended one of the Bay Ruth World Series, and I just kind of snuck in. I just kind of sat in the back. And I was mainly kind of just there. I mean, I love baseball. But I wanted to ask some of the visitors how their accommodations, their food, how they found the city and the people. And I probably talked to a dozen. And it was, I mean, I left there pumping my chest pretty good. Park and Recs, obviously not enough can be said about preparations, the fields. But what really, they really didn't talk about that. They talked about the people in the city. And it's their second year back, 20 teams. I don't know how many, you know, I don't know how many kids that is, or young men, but and I don't know how many family members, but I know it's a lot. And I didn't hear anything negative or even neutral. Everything was very positive. So I just wanted to share that. And great job, all the parks. I know it took a lot. And it was, I hope they do it again. And congratulations to the Alabama Raw Dogs, right? The Raw Dogs and the Tropics and the Flying Squirrels did a great job as well. But anyway, just wanted to say kudos and Bravo Zulu there.
Anyone else?
I'll just say, I know last meeting, I brought it up to remind people to go to it on that Wednesday. But then, having attended it, and I know some other council members did as well, the Police National Night Out that was held at Arena Park, just unbelievable, phenomenal event. And I don't think we can give you guys enough pray. I mean, it just very well attended. The fireworks were amazing, the events, the kid events. My son enjoyed it, loved it. I know it took a lot of work, and so I appreciate everything the PD did, the department did, as well as your leadership team. And I know Bobby Newton did a bunch with it. And so just can't say enough positive things about that event, so.
Great. Any other reports? All right, thanks. Moving on, is there anyone in the audience wishing to appear as an advisory board applicant? No?
Hello. John Spear. I am applicant for Park and Rec Advisory Board. Just want to let you guys know I'm passionate about the Park and Rec Department and really believe in helping our community. And I think I can be a tool, a resource to get some things done and help out in that position. So please consider me for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the Planning and Zoning Commission report. Mr. Blank.
Good evening, everybody. Planning and zoning had five items presented for consideration in our meeting last week. First of these was the zoning request upon annexation of property at 560 Silverado Trail. This request was the zone property is R1, which is single-family suburban residential upon annexation. That passed in favor of eight to nothing. Second of these was a sign exception at 3102 Lexington Avenue. This is the property of La Croix Church. Exception to install two freestanding signs along Lexington Avenue frontage. And that was recommended for approval with the condition that no freestanding signs should be allowed along the Cape La Croix Road frontage. That passed eight to nothing as well. Third is 205 South Mount Auburn Road Parking Lot Interior Landscaping Exception. This property is an empty lot in front of Hampton Inn. That's going to be redeveloped, my understanding is, for a restaurant. And the request is exemption to reduce the interior parking lot landscaping from 15% down to 10.8%. And that passed seven in favor, none in opposition, with one abstaining. Fourth was Cape West Crossing East Third Subdivision Record Plat. This property is located at the corner of Mount Auburn and Highway 74 is an empty vacant lot. And this plat resubdivides three commercial lots to two new lots, and that was approved eight in favor, zero in opposition. And lastly, fifth was Ponder's Subdivision Record Plat. This plat reconfigures two residential lots to create two new lots. This property is on the corner of West End and Whitner here in town. Eight in favor, zero in opposition on this one as well. Be happy to answer any questions on these.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, we'll next have the consent agenda review. Dr. Haskin.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, we added eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 for your review tonight. Number eight, we have an annexation petition for properties located at 3082 County Road 620 and 3268 Perryville Road. And of course, setting a public hearing in that regard. Number nine, we have an agreement with Frontal Burger for concrete street repair for our 2024 projects. Number 10, we have the Airport Infrastructure Grant with the Federal Aviation Administration to construct 10 new teehangers. And of course, number 11, we're ready to update the city's policy to conform to the Missouri Open Meetings laws in relation in concert with state statute. And finally, number 12, we're ready to accept the improvements of taxiway B at the airport and release the final payment to Emory Sapp and Sons. Mayor, that concludes the review.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Haskin. We'll now move into regular session and begin with the call to order and a real call vote. Mr. Taylor.
Mark Bliss.
Here.
David Cantrell.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Brett Pierce.
Here.
Dan Preston is absent. Tamika Randall.
Here.
Nate Thomas.
Here.
All right, thank you, Counsel. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right. Mr. Thomas?
Second.
Ms. Randall, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, then. All in favor of the agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Thank you. We do not have any public hearings tonight. We have a consent agenda. Mr. Young?
Bill 2477 in ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, Establishment of Water Rates and Fees by amending Chapter 29, providing for submission of proposal to the qualified voters of the city at the election to be held November 5, 2024, directing the city clerk to provide notice of said election. Bill 2477 ordinance of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, Establishment of Water Rates and Fees by amending Chapter 29, providing submission of proposal to the qualified voters, the city at the election to be held November 5, 2024, directing the city clerk to provide notice of said election. Bill 2476 in ordinance, providing for the levying of annual city revenue tax, public health tax, special business district number two for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. Bill 2476 in ordinance, providing for the levying of the annual city revenue tax, public health tax, special business district number two for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. Bill 2478 in ordinance, accepting permanent utility easement from the Mary Meyer Trust for a vacant lot directly north of 331 North Main Street in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2478 in ordinance, accepting a permanent utility easement from Mary Meyer Trust for a vacant lot directly north of 331 North Main Street in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2479 in ordinance, repealing ordinance 5666 and replacing it by accepting three permanent utility easements from various property owners for the alley right of way between South Park Avenue and Southwest and Boulevard in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2479 in ordinance, repealing ordinance 5666 and replacing it by accepting three permanent utility easements from various property owners for the alley right of way between South Park Avenue and Southwest and Boulevard in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 248 in ordinance, approving the record plat of Park West Hospitality Center, number three subdivision. Bill 2480 in ordinance, approving the record plat of Park West Hospitality Center, number three subdivision. Bill 2475 in ordinance, amending Chapter 17 to quarter ordinance to the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, regarding urban deer hunting and the discharge of weapons. Bill 2475 in ordinance, amending Chapter 17 to quarter ordinance to the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, regarding urban deer hunting and the discharge of weapons. Bill 2481, resolution acknowledging receipt of annexation petitions for property located through 3082 County Road 620 and 3268 Perryville Road, and setting a public hearing regarding proposed annexations. Bill 2482, resolution authorizing city manager executing agreement with Frontal Burger Concrete and Zinc for concrete street repair 2024 project in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2483, resolution authorizing city manager execute grant agreement with the United States of America acting through the Federal Aviation Administration for Airport Infrastructure. Bill 2484, resolution amending and adopting the city's policy to conform with the Missouri Open Meetings and Records Law.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Young. That was quite a list. Counsel, we have the consent agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Bliss?
Second.
Mr. Thomas, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, then, of the consent agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That agenda carries. Nothing was removed from the consent agenda. We have two new ordinances before us tonight. First is Bill 2485, an ordinance approving the issuance of tax increment and special district revenue bonds in connection with the RCC Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan, pledging and assigning certain revenues for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the bonds, and authorizing certain other actions and documents in connection therewith. This is the first reading. Mr. Pulli.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Haskin, counsel. In October 2023, the City Council approved the TIFF Plan and the TIFF redevelopment agreement for Westport Mall redevelopment. Since then, the developer has been working on plans for the first redevelopment project area, RPA 1, of the TIFF Plan. The bonds are now ready to be issued for the project in accordance with redevelopment agreement. The ordinance before you now approves the city documents necessary to allow the Cape County IDA to issue the bonds in support of the project. I have here, in council, I have Mr. Mark Graham and Mr. John Hanson, if you have any questions.
All right. Well, I'll ask anyone in the audience if there's any comments or questions you'd like to share. All right, hearing none, then. Counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 2485?
Hey, can I, can I ask?
Well, let's get, let's get it on the table.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Thomas, Mr. Bliss. Discussion?
All right, thank you. Sorry, Mayor. Just curious, since I was not part of the voting party or a council. I'm just curious, since I was not part of the voting party or a council at that time, has anything changed? It's a small town, and growing up here, unfortunately, I know a lot of people. And so I get a lot of calls and emails, and there were some things that have happened. I don't know if there's some lawsuits from, I guess, Tim Jury? Tim Jury regarding, I don't know, some, I don't know if they're easements or what they are. I'm just curious, you know, I didn't vote on it, so it's not on me. But what I want to understand now is what we're doing. Is this, was this, is this part of what was originally voted on? And if so, great, but have things changed during the development since they've been working? And is this something different than what was voted on?
Mr. Grimm, would you like to?
I'll start off and then maybe kick it over to the developers' representatives to answer part of the questions. So from a redevelopment agreement standpoint, nothing has changed. So the redevelopment agreement envisioned six redevelopment project areas. And those are, might call them different phases within the overall project. And what the work that is occurring now at the mall is all within redevelopment project area one. And this proposed financing is to pay for a portion of the project costs within redevelopment project area one. And so the lawsuit that you're referencing is for one of the outparcel areas and does not affect this portion of the project and would not affect this bond issue. So again, the developers' representative can go into more detail about the lawsuit if you desire. But from our standpoint, and Mr. Young and I have discussed it, I've discussed it with the IDA's counsel, and no one from a bond financing standpoint feels like that lawsuit has any impact on the proposed transaction.
Thank you, Mark.
Mayor, members of council, and Councilmember Cantrell, thank you for the question. My name is John Hanson. I'm with the IRR Corporate and Public Finance, public finance advisor to the developer. We don't have legal counsel representation from the developer here tonight. I would agree with everything that Mark Grimm just represented with respect to what I know about the lawsuit. We don't believe it has any effect on RPA 1 or the financing contemplated here tonight, but happy to stand and answer any other questions that you may have.
Was this something maybe anticipated or no?
No.
Is this?
Okay. Not anticipated.
But it has no.
With respect to your broader question, is what we're doing tonight executing what was approved back in October with respect to the TIF plan and the TIF redevelopment agreement? Absolutely, 100%.
Thank you, John.
And this is RA 1? RA 1, is that what?
Redevelopment Project Area 1. Sometimes we call it RPA 1.
RPA 1, okay. And was RPA 1, is that the total, you said 18% of the is going to be TIF? Is that what we're allowing?
I don't recall.
Well, how much, how much are we? Well, it says 18 million. Is that what we're approving today or what are we approving? How much are we approving to be paid for RPA 1?
Yeah, with respect to the bonds that the Cape County IDA are going to issue with respect to redevelopment project area one, we've requested an authorization from the IDA up to 30 million of par value of bonds.
Is that all the bonds or how much more is there? 30 million?
Those are all the bonds for this phase of the project. We.
What's this phase?
Do anticipate, and that we would expect to come back later for redevelopment project areas two through six to discuss financing with you at that time, but we're just doing the first one tonight.
Okay. What does, what does one entail? Is it, I've seen a lot of demo out there.
Yeah, absolutely. For lack of more specificity, the Macy's wing of the project, so the northeast wing of the project, and more specifically, the shops that are going to face north to William Street and be, and have storefronts that immediately are accessible from the parking lot.
Okay. How many men are out there right now working?
Between 60 and 80 every day, up to 120 on when things are really great.
Gotcha.
Other questions, Council?
I do have a, I didn't ask a gazillion questions, so I just have a statement. And typically, I just kind of go, but I don't, I didn't want to miss any words on this. And as everyone knows, I have expressed my, many times before, publicly and privately, my concerns and frustrations and dismay. Now, I do not want to miss, mix, or mince any of my words to council, city staff, or our citizens. I vote no, as I did every single time in the past, and today is no as well. If this bond is approved by the council, we will continue to pad the pockets of million-dollar private developers' accounts while our city, community, and citizens lose their hard-earned dollars. This decision will be a disastrous and detrimental if council approves this reckless request that's ongoing, and we as a council will definitely be identified as having our party screwed up and our citizens to lose faith in us as leaders. So I've asked all the questions I have, my mind has not changed, and the direction that we will go in to approve this will not be good for the city. The amount of requesting for asking taxpayer dollars is ridiculous. And what's discerning to me, we just approved for regular, hard-working people to pay their extra in water, but we got many dollars to help them all. And so that's where I stand with that. I vote no. If we move forward as a council, we are doing a disservice for our citizens in this community. So that's why I stand on that.
Well, I would just add that I think you're mischaracterizing what is happening today. No, 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 I have my time. No, excuse me, Tamika, you had.
No, excuse you.
No, no, Tamika, I'm sorry, you spoke, and now it's my turn.
Now, you're not going to tell me about my character or what you assume.
I didn't say your character. I said you're mischaracterizing what's happening tonight.
You just tell your point of view. If you got.
I'm trying.
If you got a point of view, you share.
I'm trying.
Do not, I'm not a lawyer, the lawyer is out there, so don't agree to disagree with me.
Ms. Randall.
You share your point of view, don't disregard what I just said. I'm just telling you, don't disregard what I just said.
Here's my opinion.
I gave you my point of view, and you give your point of view, but I'm not going to disregard what you say as a mayor because I'm going to respect that, but you're not going to disregard what I said. Everything about the mall is enough, so it don't make a difference.
It's no to you, and that's, that's fine. That's your opinion. Well, what I'm saying is what, some of what you just said is a mischaracterization of what's happening.
You're not even an expert to critique what I just said. So you, as a mayor, represent the city. I've asked the request that this didn't be approved for the council. I just asked the request. I didn't tell y'all what to do. I'm just letting you all know where I stand with it and continue to stand. So don't disregard the comments I say because you have a different point of view. You share your comments and see if everybody's stronger with you aligned with, as are leaders.
Well, these things have been approved six to one for the past year.
Well, we still got to vote, and we got new council members, and we still got.
Tamika, you're interrupting quite a bit. Everyone, every.
First of all, you should have called me out on what I said.
Well, everyone up here gets a chance to speak. You had your chance, I have mine.
Don't comment on nothing I said.
Okay, I would just like to restate, everyone up here, not everyone, excuse me, there were council members who weren't present a year ago when we debated this issue. There have been many agreements approved by the city in this whole process. And there's a timeline given in some of these documents that we're talking about tonight. But this issue in particular pertains to the bonding, right? And the process, Mr. Grimm, if you could just briefly come back up for a moment and just share with us, I think there's probably in the community confusion about what the IDA does and the need for the IDA.
Okay, so the Industrial Development Authority is named in the redevelopment agreement as the entity to issue bonds for this project. And the bonds will be payable, these bonds for this initial phase will be payable from the new tax revenues, the incremental tax revenues associated with that, with redevelopment project area one, as well as the new community improvement district sales tax that's on the entire site, including JCPenney, and the new transportation development district sales tax. So just, as you all may recall, and for new council members, tax increment financing does not impact any of the pre-existing tax revenues, either property taxes or sales taxes. Tax increment financing captures 50% of the incremental, i.e. new, sales taxes, and then these bonds are also payable from the new CID sales tax and the new TDD sales tax.
And so this process with the IDA and with bonding is, the city's involved, but it's, we have to involve the IDA?
Yeah, the city's involved for two reasons. Number one, even if, taking TIF out of it, if the IDA issues bonds for St. Francis Hospital, because it's a county IDA, you may recall from other, from prior transactions, the county IDA has to get the city's approval to do financed projects within the city limits. That's just the way the statute's written. So even if this were a St. Francis Hospital financing, you would still be asked to approve the financing of the IDA. In this case, because the TIF revenues are involved, you're being asked, there's a couple of agreements that the city's a party to, the key one is a financing agreement where the city agrees to take the TIF revenues, send them to the bond trustee on behalf of the IDA to pay the bondholders. Well, it's anticipated that the, if the council approves this, the bonds will go to market in mid-September, and the transaction would close at the end of September.
So what we're deciding tonight has no cost to the city? It's.
Yeah, the bonds are payable from the same revenue stream that's already identified in the redevelopment agreement. So I, the bond issue is implementing what the redevelopment agreement envisions.
Oh, Brett, can you turn on your.
I'm sorry, and this revenue comes from RPA 1 only?
Well, the TIF revenues are RPA 1 only. The community improvement district sales taxes are from the entire mall plus JCPenney. The TDD sales taxes are the entire mall plus JCPenney.
And will any of this be affected by the current lawsuit preventing any covenant, or the covenant that preventing any outlying building?
Yeah. No, what, we've been advised by the developers' council, and in our interpretation of that lawsuit, we've reviewed it, the underwriters' council reviewed it, and those have reviewed it. None of us believe that it will impact this transaction.
So there's, on the revenue model, there was, there was no revenue generating from the?
Correct. The revenue model only takes into account stores that have committed, either have signed leases or have committed to open within the mall proper, none of the outlots.
Okay. Do we have a list of those stores?
Yeah, in fact, I think, I think it's just distributed today, a new revenue model, and Mr. Hanson can address that.
Okay.
And to be clear, the lawsuit mentioned earlier does not involve the city?
Yeah, the city's not a party to it. It's a lawsuit between, is my understa, oh, right, CLD Drury Family Trust and the developer.
Any other questions? All right. All in favor then of Bill 2485, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I oppose.
Did you get that, Mr. Taylor?
I oppose as well.
Ms. Randall, and, all right, so motion passes four to two. Next, we have Bill 2486, an ordinance amending and readopting Sections 290 and 297 of the City Code of Cape Charro, Missouri, related to conflicts of interest. This is the first reading. Ms. Conrad.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The state statutes of Missouri require that any political subdivision with an annual operating budget over $1 million is subject to conflicts of interest and financial disclosures. Under this, under the statute, the city has the option to follow the statutes or adopt, biannually adopt its own method of disclosing conflicts of interest and substantial interests. Since 1992, the City Council has biannually adopted its own ordinance relating to conflicts of interest and financial disclosures, with the most recent ordinance being adopted in August of '22. We are required to respond to the state by mid, by September 15, I believe is the date. So we took the city's existing conflicts of interest ordinance and compared it directly to state statute and to see how our current policy compared. So the changes that are reflected in the ordinance are all changes that are reflected or what are in the state statute, with the exception of the penalty requirement. Our current ordinance does not require candidates for elected positions to file a financial disclosure statement. And so this ordinance would require candidates to file, and it would also set a deadline for penalty if they're not filed. Currently, under state statute, they have a monetary penalty with removal from the ballot after 21 days if they've not filed. This ordinance proposes that if a candidate does not file by the 21 days, that their name would be removed, there is no monetary value placed with it. And those, that's the difference between the state statute and the city ordinance. Otherwise, the provisions that you see in this proposed ordinance match what's in the state statute.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Is anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this? Okay, hearing none then, Council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2486?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Bliss, Mr. Thomas, thank you. Council, discussion?
Just for my clarification, can you give me an example of a conflict of interest that you would have, that you had to look at? So I understand, other than personnel, is it all, is it in business or is it just personnel?
It's financial, it's financial. So in your conflicts of interest statement that, the forms that we have given you before, is if it's over a $500 transaction directly with the city or agency of the city, then you would have to disclose that to the city.
Okay, so that's specifically to elected?
Elected, the ordinance does address elected officials and certain appointed officials, including the city manager, the city attorney, the finance director. I believe those are the ones.
Okay, all right, thank you, Joe.
If you're receiving payments from HUD, would that be over $500? Say if you're.
HUD is not a city agent, HUD, I do not believe so.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Do not believe so. I will double-check that, however, though. Any other questions?
I just want to say I appreciate you working on this ordinance, and I think this is a good one. And I think it's important that the public have faith in its elected officials and the candidates that are running. And I think that disclosure of such information only helps the democratic process.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none then, all in favor of Bill 2486, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. We had one appointment tonight to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Council voted, and that new member is John Spear. Congratulations, Mr. Spear.
You'll need a.
So moved.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, thank you. Is there a motion?
Like to make a motion.
Yeah, sorry. Mr. Thomas, Mr. Cantrell, any further discussion? All in favor then of appointing Mr. Spear to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries. Now, congratulations, Mr. Spear. We had no other business, except we did have one person register to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight. That is Ms. Karen Schiler. Please, as always, you'll have three minutes to discuss your issue.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Karen Schiler, I live at 36 North Henderson. I'm an engineer from Princeton, I grew up there, my father was a professor at the university, and I worked as a manager at Procter &amp; Gamble, and then left there to take care of my children. Got a master's degree in counseling from the University of Scranton. And then my husband was transferred with Procter &amp; Gamble to the Cape Charro plant, and we moved to Jackson in 2003, and I was very involved with the PTO there. And then I left my husband in 2012 and came to Cape and lived on Henderson and met people and saw a whole different, I guess, walk of life. And so, but I still, then in 2015, I was renting some office space on Independence, and I was trying, my tenant wouldn't, I couldn't evict my tenant, and so, but I'd left my husband, so I needed to stay somewhere. so I needed to stay somewhere. So I stayed in my office and my friend's sister had just been released from prison and so she was a felon and couldn't find an apartment because people don't rent to felons very much in Cape Girardeau. And so we ended up starting to recognize what the homeless issue was in Cape Girardeau. And at that time, there was a shelter associated with the church that was at 1024 William. They had a men's shelter and a women's shelter associated with them, but then they retired and so then there was nothing. And the Amen Center was developed, but it was far away and, and so I had been interested, our, our family's been interested in the issue of homelessness for a long time because my sister's in the mental health. You may not know that in the late 70s, homelessness became an issue because they released, they stopped institutionalizing people. And so they kind of released a lot of people with mental health issues onto communities that may or may not have had been ready for them. And this community wasn't really, there wasn't a whole lot of mental health back at that time. My mother lived with, her husband was the sexton of a church in New Brunswick, which is where the State University of New Jersey is, and they had a soup kitchen and she was a scientist, so she was very curious about what causes homelessness. And what she found was that when you are no longer welcome on your mother's couch is when it seems to be that homelessness becomes an issue. And there can be lots of reasons. Your mother might be dead, your mother might live somewhere else, your mother might not accept homosexuality and you're homosexual, your mother, you may have stolen from your mother too many times because you're trying to support your addiction habit, which is normally self-medicating for mental health issues that are undiagnosed. You may or may not be familiar with something called Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. It's very simple. The base of it is that we all have the need for shelter, food, clothing and security. This town is incredible with food. Sorry, am I done? Is it three minutes already?
That's three minutes, if you'd like to just.
I just want to finish up.
Well, just very briefly.
Yes, very briefly.
A wrap up?
Very briefly, sorry. Three minutes goes faster than I thought.
Yes.
So we have, it's come a long way. We, we have now the, well, the Gibson Center has beds available, so now people can go for treatment. There's the Gibson Crisis Center, there's the, we do recover, there is community partners, there is the hub. So there's a lot of really good things and mainly if you call homelessness someone who's a long-term, like a person pushing a shopping cart, we've pretty much handled that actually, most of the people that are in housing. But what we have, are seeing is transitory people who I would say maybe don't have a permanent address or living in a tent.
And Ms.
There's just two things that I was proposing that we could do to help that situation.
Go right ahead, go quick.
The first is something akin to the line of save the children. People can handle a problem if they know of one person. And so I was thinking we could call it something like save a soul and follow each of those people and we could even be in that building, which is where the CTA building is, where Community Caring Council used to be. And then the other option would be to have a couch, like Ms. Karen's couch in the old Parkwood facility, where we could have proper treatment and proper. So those are two proposals of things we could do to help the homeless situation.
Well, thank you for coming and thank you for your time and thought.
Sorry, it was so long.
That's okay. All right, counsel, that is it for the agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ms. Randall?
Second.
Mr. Cantrell, any further discussion? All in favor then of adjourned, please say aye. Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for attendance tonight.